Did you want me to do the recordings on the data, or maybe the minutes?
No.
Oh, you got it? Oh. Really?
Just talented.
Wow, okay. All right, then, I'm gonna start. We're gonna call the meeting of the Board of Appeals to order for 7:30. If you'll join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right, with respect to our members tonight, we do have some excused absences. Our board's not fully comprised tonight, so Mr. Kuscha, Mr. Koch, Mr. Lugan, and Mr. Morgenthau are excused as it relates to the record.
Was my stuff, was it my turn?
I don't think they amplify, sir. I'll try to talk louder. I think the microphones are just-
You can come up in the front row.
You're welcome to come closer.
Do you want me to talk, 'cause uh?
I'll talk louder. I'll talk louder. So we don't have, we're typically a five-person comprised board with three alternates, but we don't have everybody here tonight, so we do have a quorum for the purposes of having a meeting, but applicants do have the opportunity to have five members present to go forward with their particular petitions. So some of the petitions on the agenda have elected to continue tonight to the next meeting, so we're gonna go through that. I'm assuming you're all here for the Leyden Street petition? So we'll be getting to that once we've done all of our other, all our other business for the evening, okay? Next, we have the acceptance of minutes. I'm still reviewing the minutes. I don't know about everybody else here. My suggestion would be that we table the minutes to the next meeting, because I, a couple of points I was looking at as it related to June's hearing, I wanted to make sure that they were the way they should be. I don't know if anybody has any strong feelings about that, one or the other?
Nope, so moved.
Okay, so those will be tabled till November. Now, as to our continued public hearings, we're in receipt, oh, I beg your pardon, number three, committee reports, the Osgood Committee Report. Who would like to give that this evening?
That would not be me.
Okay.
'Cause I missed the meeting, not by accident, I had the wrong day.
I did attend the meeting. We are going to continue determining whether or not the overlay is something that's still relevant for the town, if it's something that needs to be changed or altered. We're also looking at what the town is wanting from the project as a whole, so those meetings will continue.
Oh, and they've, how many people attend them?
The meeting I went to was a total of four or five, so we had quite a few absent people.
Okay. But they, they meet regularly?
I do believe they meet regularly. I don't, Merrill?
October 27th.
October 27th will be the next meeting, and I believe it will be here.
Your potential yes.
Oh, the haunted mansion.
Maybe at Town Hall. Town Hall reopens at October 24th.
Oh, it does, it reopens. Okay. All right, well, that's great, thank you.
Welcome.
Any discussion? Hearing none? We'll move on to our continued public hearings. I believe we are in receipt of a request to continue in the signed time waiver form as it relates to the petitions of Ryan Surender for dimensional variances for 54 Phillips Court in 320 Pleasant Street, is that correct? So the request to continue to the next meeting. Hear a motion to continue that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that stands continued. Next, we are in receipt of, Merrill's in receipt of the Pond Pasture LLC petition for the Watershed Protection District. They sent that in today electronically, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so they're also requesting a continuance. I hear a, they signed the time waiver. Hear a motion to continue that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that stands continued. And lastly, I think we are in receipt of a time waiver and request to continue, the petition of Mr. Gerald Brecker, care of Don Bornstein, for 271 Stevens Street. I hear a motion. Motion?
All second.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that stands continued. So all our new business stands continued, all business rather stands continued. We do have a new public hearing tonight that is on for lot, property of Lot 5, Contuitt Street slash Zero Leyden Street. Attorney of, Attorney Burke, I believe, is here for this petition. If you give us a second, Attorney Burke, we will open the public hearing for you.
I can't see it, so someone else is gonna have to open it.
There is a legal notice. I think we just need the legal notice to open the hearing.
They're not in the packet.
Oh, wonderful, okay. There you go. Can we read that into the record?
Sure. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the Senior Center located at 120 R Main Street, North Andover, Massachusetts, on Tuesday, October 11th, 2016, at 7:30 PM. To all parties interested in the petition of Robert J. Burke Trust for property Lot 5, Contuitt Street, Zero Leyden Street, map 47, Parcels 151, North Andover, Massachusetts, 01845, in the R4 zoning district. The petitioner is requesting a special permit from sections 4.122.14, 4.122.14A.B. of the zoning bylaw. Construction of a two-family home in the R4 zoning district is required from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Application supporting materials are available for review at the Office of the Zoning Department located at 1600 Osgood Street, North Andover, Massachusetts, Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of 8:00 to 4:00, Tuesday from the hours of 8:00 to 5:30, and Friday from 8:00 to 11:30. By order of the Board of Appeals, Albert P. Manzi III, Esquire Chairman.
Okay, great. Attorney Burke, welcome. So, your public hearing's open, the floor is yours. Now, just procedurally, like we had, like I had stated at the beginning of the meeting, we're a five-person comprised board, so you, you know, have the, have the right to have five members present, because the special permit that you're requesting, like most of the special permits of areas that have come before us, require a supermajority of votes. They require four votes in the affirmative to pass. So, I'm just, we only have four here tonight, so we have enough to open the meeting, and it would be up to you, if you felt, as your presentation concludes and the discussion is over, if you wanna go forward tonight, or if you would like to request a continuance further until there are five people present at the next month's meeting, that would be up to you.
I appreciate that, and good evening. I'll make a brief presentation, and fairness to the people that are here, if they're mostly here, I'd like to address some of their questions, if they have questions of me or the board.
All right.
I don't think it would be fair to just continue it and bring it back on another date. They've given up their night to be here.
Sure.
I may at some point ask for a continuance to get the full five, five-member panel.
Sure.
But I'd like to at least open it.
That's fine, I mean, it's open, and just, and as a follow-up to that, two, the two of the members that are not here tonight, two of our regular members, to the extent that they are back in November, do have the ability to rehabilitate themselves from an evidence-presented perspective, so they could certify at that meeting, if they have reviewed the minutes, or watched the video, and they can rehabilitate themselves, so, whereas, right now, there's two associates, Attorney Jacobs and Mr. Weintraum, just so you know that. So when you elect to come back in November, if you elect to come back in November, you could have different, the board could be comprised differently. They can do that one time, if they, one time of evidence.
Okay.
And that's, I think those are all our procedural, so, sorry to interrupt.
I appreciate that. As was stated by one of the board members, we're seeking a two-family home in an R4 district. This is considered the library district, or our residential four. I think we all know the purpose of the library district provision, who has to prevent large homes from going up, or knockdowns, to prevent houses from going up in an area where they built on or knocked down, put a big two-family up, and there was a lot of contention at Town, at Town Hall, at Town Meeting for that. We understand that, but I think the bylaw also talks about, there's a library area within R4 and a Waverly Street area. In short, what we're looking to do, and the board has these documents, but just for an overview for the board, this original five-lot parcel was my grandparents' parcel, and just to put for reference, this is Chicaring Road. My office of Burke Real Estate is at the top there. Below that, on Contuitt Street, is a two-family where we got a special permit from this board. Below that is another two-family where we received a special permit from this board. Below that is another two-family where we received a special permit from this board. So of this five-lot original locus, this is the subject property of this one here today. To get there, just to put everyone in reference, to get to that lot, you come down Turnpike Street or Chicaring Road, take a left at the Richdale, into Village Green. Okay, just to put, if everyone can understand that, visualize that. When you take the left into Village Green, you then take your first left on the Leyden Street. Leyden Street is a street that the town, I'll show you this, on this one. Here we are, Chicaring, take a left on Village Green Drive, and you take a left on the Leyden Street. Leyden, many of you may know, doesn't go all the way through. It stops about here, and that was done by my grandparents, to not use it as a cut-through for the people of Contuitt, to get down, further down that way. Just what we were talking about, this is the office, two-family via special permit, two-family via special permit, two-family via special permit. Surrounding this property, the subject property, there is, I believe, 11 units of Village Green right here. So as you come into Village Green, as you first enter it, on the left is the first building with 11 units. Across from that is a building with, I think, eight units. When you take the left on the Leyden Street, on your right, there's a few buildings, I think there's a total of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 14 units in those buildings. Further down here, you have a building with four. As I stated on now two occasions, you have a two-family via special permit right here, and as you come down here, which would be Contuitt Street, you have two-family, 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 coming back to Contuitt Street, two-family, 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 single family, and then my, my building. So that is the area to get you consistent with the area and understand what we're talking about. The board has the plans. This is the property that we are looking to construct and get a special permit to construct. One driver would come off the street, the other driver would be over here. Coming in, just for visualization, it would look like that, I think that's part of your package as well. Here's Leyden Street, one here, one there. As I said, there's a building here, there's Village Green, there's Village Green here, Village Green here, and then the three special permit properties there. I think I went over fast there, but that is the proposed project. It's consistent in size and style for the three units that we put in, not we, the three special permits, two we put in and one we sold at Seaport Homes and they put in. In doing so, and in looking at the bylaw, as I just stated, I think that probably 95% to 98% of the homes in this area are all two-family. The single-family homes, I think, are up by my office and adjacent to my office. But in the, I think, one telling sign is we had to send over 250 abutter notices out because of all the people that live at Village Green. So that tells you that we're talking about a multi-family area. That being said, we would say that this unit would be very consistent to the other three units that were on the locus property. We would also say it's consistent with the bylaw in that it allows for two families via special permit, and that it is a two-family, predominantly two or more family area. I could go on, but I'll just leave it at that point. I think the application itself speaks for, speak, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Well, I just have, I just have a question about the, the street itself, Leyden Street is, the plan that's attached to the, the abutter list, which I think you held up on display.
Mm-hmm.
It, it looks like it shows it as a continuous road, but you're saying, but you're saying it's not a-
It, it stops. It stops about, if you look at the plan you're looking at, in between 163 and, I think, 67, 112, stops about 60 feet beyond the subject property.
Okay.
It just is a dead end there, it stops.
Past, past Kingston Street?
Yes, yes. So you can go through there, cut over to Kingston, you cannot come through all the way to Contuitt.
Okay. Any idea why they show it?
It's a paper street, it's always been there. I guess we could open it up if we wanted to, but with my grandparents, they felt like people down there, just like at the top, at the bottom of Contuitt, we never connected it all the way down towards Ipswich and down towards 114. I think that's 'cause I grew up in that area, and my grandparents didn't want the traffic coming down.
Sure.
So none of those streets are public?
They're all public.
Oh, that even, Contuitt's public?
Contuitt's public, they're all public, even Leyden.
Yeah, they're all public.
So they're plowed and everything?
Yes. They're all serviced.
And the properties across the street that are darkened, are they residential or commercial?
They're all residential. The only, the nearest commercial would be Richdale and or Anton's and or Surender or Real Simple Living, which is across the street, sort of, just to visualize, if you go up Village Green Drive and go straight across.
How about you tell us a little bit about the, the style that you chose in terms of the special permit?
Sure. It's a, as I said, it's a two-family condex, very similar in style and appearance to the three other units that we put in there. I have the, I think they're each three bedrooms, they each have a garage, two-car garage, and in fact, I think it says total square foot, three, total square feet, 3,584. That's 1,792 per unit.
Gotcha.
It's not per, it's not 3,584 feet per unit. So each unit would be a total of about 1,792 feet. That's a bit smaller than the three units that are on Contuitt Street, that are part of the same locus. Each unit would have separate entrances, they'd have a porch in the back, and they'd have a yard in the front, side, and back.
And you're not seeking any dimensional variances, right? Everything-
Not required, not needed. I think we fit, we fit.
Right.
So why are there two addresses? Isn't it London and, I don't have that.
The town has it as both Lot 5, Contuitt, and Zero Leyden. I think the post office would be Zero Leyden.
Okay.
But because the locus was Contuitt Street, it was Lot 5 out of the five, five-lot locus.
So is it technically Contuitt? Like if they're to get a mailing-
No, it's Leyden, it would be Leyden.
Leyden?
The mailing hash would be Leyden, I think it would be zero, they might go zero and two, I don't know what the town would do.
I don't think they do zero, do they?
Do they do two and four, one and three?
All the dimensions seem to fit, so just, and can you tell me just, you know, in terms of the topography, I know it's not necessarily, I know it's not a variance petition, but is the area sloped at all? Do you have any, like water runoff? How are you gonna address the water?
There is a, the Village Green apartment that's be, in the rear, doesn't come down, there is a slope down, but the parcel itself is relatively flat.
Okay.
It's right adjacent to the road, and if I, I'm visualizing it, but you, there's a slight incline up to the building behind, so that water would be running towards us. There is wetlands, and we do have an extension from conservation that's good till, I believe, next October.
And so, like, the roof water and so forth is gutted? You guys are gonna-
Yes.
Put cutters and-
Yes.
Take the water in and-
Yes.
Well, I mean, clearly, it's, it's a multi-family type area. Fairly detailed plans. Can you tell us a little bit about the exterior, is the siding, is, how do, how do they intend to, what's the construction gonna be?
I believe at this point, it would be cedar, cedar siding, shingle-type siding, obviously a traditional roof. I don't know if the developer may want to, we haven't sold the property yet, but I don't know if the developer may wanna try a vinyl siding, and there's also, there's some hardy plank siding that some developers are choosing to use. But I think if you look at the other three units, the, two that were developed by us, one that was developed by Seaport Homes, the amount of money that they would pay, they're obviously gonna, to recoup their money, they're gonna have to put significant, similar, and very good products there, to recoup that kind of money.
Sure. And what about the landscaping? Is there any type of landscaping plan that accompanies this in terms of, I can see the, the proposed pavement and so forth, you know, shrubs, trees, anything?
I'm sure the landscape, you know, we haven't contemplated that, but like the other homes, we have a very significant landscape, we have brick pavers that go up to the driveway, we have landscaped lighting and the like, is usually landscaping both at the deck, in the front, and at the deck.
Is there anything that divides your lot from lots of Village Green? Like are there trees, or a fence, or?
There's a street, if you wanna go across the street.
What about next to it?
No, there's a-
So it's just grass?
Just grass, and it's a, there's a little wooded area and a slope up to the building behind us. That would be the only building that's on that side of the street that is part of Village Green.
That would be units number two through 22, as depicted on the plan?
Yes. Approximately 10 units. There is, to answer your, maybe a follow-up to your question, there is a significant rock wall that we built for conservation approximately 10, 12 years ago, to keep people out of, more so on my lot, to keep people out of that conservation area.
Okay, so there is something that somewhat creates the divide, so?
I don't wanna say it creates a divide between Village Green and this lot, it just create, keeps people out of conservation, because if you look at Lot 1, it runs all the way back to the subject area. Let me show you.
You're talking about that lot right there?
Yes, so, if you look at this lot, this lot runs all the way back.
Okay.
All right? So there is a significant brick, a rock wall here, but it doesn't keep people, it keeps people from going into conservation. There's nothing between Village Green and this lot.
Okay. Any thought on creating, whether it be trees, or fence, or, I know it goes more to the landscaping possibly aspect of it, but almost to create a divide?
Well, I, I think there's a natural divide there now. There is some, some trees. I don't think that whoever's building this would ever wanna knock all those down, because it would provide the natural backyard for these, that, in that area, the Village Green side of the building, it's going to be the backyards for both of these units.
All right, well, maybe we'll see if there's any questions from the audience.
Sure.
Or the abutters, rather, I should say, and then we'll try, we, we'll do as well, whatever questions get raised, we'll let the totality of them get raised, and then you can address them one by one when they're, when they're done.
Sure, thank you.
Okay. So if there's anybody that's in the abutter, you know, statutory abutter, so if you received a notice to be here, that wants to come up and ask any questions at the podium, you're welcome to. Hi.
Hi there. Darian Bate from Village Green.
Okay. And what's your address, sir?
12 Village Green.
12, just give us a-
That's your address, it's not the lot, so it's-
No, I'm not.
Okay, yep, gotcha. Go ahead, sir.
So I'm just going to go through some of the concerns that I've listed, that, you know, I'm speaking with some of the residents that are here, and I'm not representing them, but they may come up, these are just, this is just my list.
Sure.
So far, there's been zero consultation with our condo association, we've just found out from the letter that was sent out, this mainly applies to the driveway and Leyden Lane, Leyden Street issues. It's written down as a public, but essentially plowed by the contracting company that we use, and also, I'll continue on, is, there's wetlands and pond concerns, I mean, this is, Mr. Burke did address this, but there are, you know, lots of trees, lots of birds use there, there is a pond, and it's, you know, it is a wetland area, and I know that is under Conservation Department's view, but I think the importance of this two Village Green is quite, quite, you know, significant. And I say note, there are trees, and from stakes that have been laid out, we can see that the property line is about one and a half to two feet from some, from some of these trees, and they are, you know, quite large oak trees. Any construction activity would affect these trees, and they are not actually shown on the survey plan that I saw in the Town Hall. And also, you know, just from this meeting, the style that we've discussed doesn't matter. It just kinda, you know, Village Green right now is, especially that section, is built in one, one time, there's brick exterior, we, you know, we're kind of familiar with what's going on, it's, it's a uniform design, I guess, but when you put a cedar or vinyl sided building, which is quite lar, much larger than the adjacent properties with, all of which have no garages, we're kind of completely taking, you know, taking away the uniformity of the area. So, that's my list, just putting that, concerns out, and just wanna see what your responses are, Mr. Burke.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anybody else wanna come up? Just name and address.
My name is Amy Monroe. I live at 52 Village Green Drive.
It's fact-checked, it's checked, oh, sorry. Fact-check is, sorry.
Well, you know, as we try to, everybody's a statutory abutter. Okay, so I have that, I have that as Diane Hessen, 52?
Yes, and she is present as well, but I also live at 52 Village Green Drive.
Okay, but, so you're the, but you're the, you're the title? You're the owner?
Yeah, Diane.
As long as I get someone that has the authority, okay, go ahead.
So I have several concerns about this proposal, the first being the infrastructure. The gas, the sewer, the water, electric, these are all going to represent major disturbances to Village Green residents. It makes absolutely no sense to me that non-Village, that non-Village Green residents would need to go through the only entrance and exit of a complex to access a home. There is nothing separating this proposed home from Village Green. Village Green is a very self-contained complex. There's only one way in and one way out, and anyone that has been in Village- Simply put, Village Green is congested enough, there are a lot of people already living in a very small area, and not just people, but also cars and traffic, and I'm concerned about the additional vehicles that this would bring onto the roads. Also, what kind of precedent would this set? I can, it could also happen in other complexes where people will be seeking to build homes in other complexes, and there are many other places in North Andover similar to Village Green that I can also see other residents not appreciating. This would greatly lower property values, especially for the buildings directly abutting the potential construction. Although Village Green is also very quiet, neighbors are very respectful of one another, and the quiet, homey environment that we all enjoy in Village Green, I can see potentially getting disrupted there. And also speaking to the wetland concerns, I'm wondering if there's been an environmental feasibility study, or if there's a potential vernal pools where protected animals could also live. And also the destruction and elimination of open space is in direct conflict with the North Andover Master Plan. Now, the previous permits that were granted in the past?
Well, can I just, you know, they can build a single-family home there by right, right? It's, it's a lot that?
This proposal is for a condex.
Right, so just in terms of the open space, just to, so they could build a single-family home that's the same size?
Okay.
Without having to come here?
I was not aware of that, but I also would like, I also think that my other points speak very well to the point of having a home that's within a complex, that there's only one way to get in and get out, there isn't another road that leads to it.
I was just addressing the open space master plan because, just because it's a lot.
And the special permits that were granted in the past, I don't believe that they would have as much of a bearing on this issue, because as I said before, the access point is entirely different, and there really is nothing separating this proposed area from the rest of Village Green.
Okay.
Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. Okay. Hi.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm Keith Connors from four Village Green Drive.
I'll find you.
Yeah, I don't have to do the work.
What's that?
I don't have to do the work.
How come you're not doing this all?
Because I have two lawyers sitting to the right and left of me, so.
Can you see it?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, okay, sounds good.
Great, you got me there. So I've been, I've been at Village Green for, I think, twenty-three years, I moved there in nineteen ninety-four, I've been in North Andover since nineteen eighty-nine. I just want to say upfront, I'm not a lawyer at all. We got the notice that there was a certified mail about two and a half weeks ago, I picked it up, within what would be two weeks ago, so.
Okay.
It's difficult to try to simulate in such a short time what this impact means, but I'll just share and paint out a little bit what the, what this property is, and I would encourage any of you who have a voice in this to actually go there. So Village Green, as you know, is right off of one-twenty-five. As you come into it, everything slopes down, our complex is below the street level. In fact, when I first moved to Village Green, I had some water issues with the basement, I dug out the window wells in the basement, lowered them, and it seemed to address that, which is great at the time, and I haven't had problems since, but this, this lot that Mr. Burke is speaking to, I wish I had his larger map, but, oh, do you have it? Oh, that'd be great, thank you. Yeah, yeah, thank you. So, so it, the street ends right here, Leyden, and then it just goes right into Kingston. This property here is actually, so we have, right after our two buildings, one building is, lies beside Village Green Drive and one-twenty-five are trickering, and then the building I'm in, which is number four, is adjacent to that, to the south part of it, also lies to the street side. After that, not so much in front of my complex, but the other complex is the parking for both buildings. So you have the parking that kind of almost goes up to the property, but before actually it reaches the property, there's four substantial trees, I would say they're at least fifty years in growth, I don't know, you've been around a while, maybe you know how long they've been there.
Are you older than all trees?
And I didn't mean that, actually, but I'm fifty-one, I've been there for, as I say, twenty-three years, they were substantial when I moved in, so, so they've been around a while.
Do we know whose lot line the trees are on, whose property they're on, Village Green or yours, just out of curiosity?
I don't have the trees that he's referring to.
I'm familiar with the complex and the parking area, I'm familiar with the locus.
Behind, so the parking's behind those two buildings, correct?
But I just, I don't know whose, which property, if they delineate the property or not.
I'm going to suggest that, I'd just be guessing, but I'm going to suggest they're on the Village Green property.
Okay.
Okay.
So, and I don't know how the, what the foundation footprint is yet, but in terms of the stakes that are out right now, it would indicate that this property is coming substantially close, I would say, and Village Green folks can correct me if I'm wrong, maybe a couple feet from the trees?
Well, well.
In terms of the?
Just before?
You have pictures, okay.
Just so I could, the plan that's before us, and Attorney Burke will have an opportunity to address you, the plan that's before us shows that the proposed structure meets the setbacks for the zoning.
Okay, and I'm just talking about the impact to these four trees, and I, I don't know, based on what you're looking at, would that, does that show that?
So, so the plan?
It does not show the trees.
It doesn't show the trees, it just shows the setback from the lot line, which is what my question was, in the context of where the trees are.
Yeah.
I'm assuming you like the trees?
Well, you know, part of it is, so if you, you're living in a condo complex, you have asphalt paving in, in front of the other building, but then what makes this property more valuable and more attractive is then you have a sloping property that's grassed with these substantial trees that border the parking lot, so separate you from all the other buildings that are there, and give you this, this sense of, that you're part of, really the connection between the environment, the nature that's, that is there in your two buildings, as opposed to if they're gone, just having a completely open expansive view of all the other Village Green buildings. So one of the things that was valued to me as an owner when I purchased it was, and particularly my building, that actually doesn't have anything in front of it at all but the woods, is that you feel like you're a part of one of the better homes in North Andover that have the big backyards and the wilderness, and that's what brings a lot of people to our community. At least you have a little bit of that sense, and that's terrific, and that's a huge value, I think, to myself and, and everybody here. So to think that this construction could impact that and damage the trees so substantially that they would die is just concern of mine, so that's one reason that brought me out of here. To the construction itself, it really is interesting, I appreciate what you were saying, where, you know, you really have a uniform development that are all brick townhomes that are designed in a way that are in harmony with each other, and then you have this little plot of a field that remained open space that we've parked cars during severe winter storms, that our kids have played on, that my family have had wiffle ball games on, et cetera, that now that small oasis of land is going to have not another Village Green brick townhome to keep it uniform, it would still be a bummer, but at least you'd say, well, it's in the context of everything being built. Now instead, you're having something that's completely different, is a family home. And it was interesting, when you were talking about that stone wall, which is actually gorgeous, I loved when it was put up, but it's pretty much a barrier between Village Green and those two family homes that were developed on, I'm not sure, how do you say that, street? Is it?
Cottuit.
Cottuit, right. So now you're actually having a home that's going to be built in front of that brick wall that is right next to the, I, I don't know who would want to live there, quite frankly, and miss a development of all townhomes next to a asphalt parking lot. The only thing separating us in that new development will be those four large trees, I just think it's a poor idea of planning around it.
Are they deciduous trees, are they pines?
They are all deciduous, none of them are pines.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, so those are just concerns, you know, I appreciate that you, that we still at least have the opportunity, even though it was such short notice, to come and express what this looks like. You know, I'd love you guys to go down there and just see it and imagine yourself living there, seeing a home amongst these townhomes, that's just really trying to squeeze every last bit of land that's available to put in one more property, just kind of seems not good planning, not good for whoever would move into that home, and not good for the abutters that live there, so I'd hope we'd consider that. And then the, there are constraints around, but this is wetland, and I'd love to have that looked into more, it seems like it was already addressed with the Conservation Council. It would have been great if the, if the owners and the abutters could have had a voice in that as well, so, so thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with all of you.
Thank you. Hi. Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name's Joanne LaValle, I live at six C Village Green Drive.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Six C.
Six, okay.
Six with the letter C.
Six with the letter C. Gotcha, okay.
So there's been a lot of talk about the trees, I have pictures of the trees, would you like to see the trees?
Of course, sure.
Okay.
I think it was very nice that the Burks didn't throw anybody out during the wiffle ball games, to be honest with you.
I was thinking the same thing.
So particularly, there are just different viewpoints, pages three, four and five are more close-ups.
Are these, so we're all looking at the same spot? These are your trees here that you're talking about?
Yeah, so if you turn to page, that's like a distance view, but page three, four and five.
Do you have a copy from Mr. Burke, too?
It's not as clear as that, but I do.
Oh, okay. If we're going to see it, he should see it too, you know?
Mr. Chair, may I just, I think it would alleviate one thing, may I just suggest one thing?
Yeah, I was going to have you get a copy of the trees.
I'll look at them too. People have mentioned the stakes, those are wetland flaggings for conservation, that's not where the house is going.
So you can't go past that?
That's correct. Well, I, I just don't want people to think that's where the house is. We were asked by Conservation to re-flag before they gave us the extension, so I just wanted to clarify that, that's wetland flagging.
The stakes, okay.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Yeah, it's a, I'm made from a California here, so that's kind of what they have.
So what they're looking at is the stakes, thinking that that's the home?
Yeah, and it's not.
Okay.
Can you see these?
Yes.
So I think the concern of everybody in regard?
Would you like us to keep, hang on to these?
Oh, no, yeah, you can keep them, right, it's fine. As far as the trees go, and, I mean, of course, we saw the stakes, and we're all concerned about the, the close proximity of those stakes to the trees, and it's, I mean, I'm not, I, I don't survey land, I don't, I'm not, certainly not a professional, but I would be concerned, I can see the, the size of what that land appears to be, and then looking at his plans, it looks like he's putting up a pretty substantial house, it's going to take up a good part of that land. I'm assuming the land, I mean, I'm not very good at reading plans, but because that, that sort of, that field, it's a field now, is much lower than where Village Green sits, where the parking lot sits, that they're going to probably fill that in. I mean, I would think if they didn't, they'd probably be sitting in a pool of water, so that's just, that's just, I'm just kind of guessing, they would fill that in. So what, from what I understand, what would happen, if you bring up the soil level and you put that around the trunks of the trees, that really hurts the trees, sorry, I was yelling, but I was competing against whatever that was, but also...